This time I'll call the October meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers if he'd lead us in our invocation for the board, and immediately following that, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Let us pray. Most kind grace heavenly father, we again want to thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. Lord, we want to pray your guidance and your deliverance, Lord, of helping us get through these tough times. Lord, whether it be flooding, we know there's many families that got damaged, the loss of life, the pandemic. But Lord, especially, we want you to help take care of our children in this county. Lord, we want to give them the best education possible. Lord, we know we've got a great school system. We want to continue to be good and be great and be the best in this state and the best in this country, Lord, because we've got the means, we've got the people, we've got the parents, we've got the community, we've got the staff of this school system, Lord, that I pray that you guide and direct each and every one of them every day to be the best that they can be. And Lord, be with us all, hold us up, carry us through the tough times as we know you will. Lord, be with this board as we make the decisions for this school system and for this community, these children, these parents. Guide and direct us in all that we do, Lord, and we will give you the praise and the glory for all. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Under our announcements, I'd just like to announce that our next regular board meeting will be held here November 8th at seven o'clock Monday, November the 8th. I'd also like to announce that our appointee to the Haywood Community College Board of Trustees has resigned due to the fact that he's going to be moving to another location outside of Haywood County, so he resigned his position. We are now taking applications for that position. And you would actually be appointed to fulfill the remainder of the term that he resigned from, which ends June 30th, 2024. And individuals seeking this appointment must apply by submitting a resume. Resumes may be hand-delivered to Haywood County Schools Board of Education, which is 62 Joy Lane in Waynesville, as better known as the old Central Elementary School. And you can also mail it to my attention to 1230 North Main Street, Waynesville, North Carolina, 28786. The application deadline is four o'clock on Friday, October 29th. So those interested in that, please apply. I'd like to also announce that Mr. Nesbit is traveling, so he will not be with us this evening. I don't know whether he's called in or been able to get service or not to come into. Okay, he said that where he was at, didn't think the cellphone was going to be able to work, so therefore. And I've asked, Dr. Bill was asking for just a short amount of time. Would that be okay if we do it now, Dr. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the board as well as a number of teachers and administrators in the school system and people in the community for all of the contacts, notes, and prayers in the passing of my brother. That was a lot quicker than we thought it would be, but he's in a much better place. And I just wanted to thank everybody for your prayers. I certainly felt those.
Thank you, Dr. Bill. And the board expresses our condolences for your loss, your brother. Are there any agenda adjustments?
Yes. Yeah, special issues needs to put two things on there.
All right.
So A and B, wherever you want to put them.
All right, let's do it after policies, we'll do special issues as an item that needs to come up. Without objection, that'll be okay. Okay. Anything else, anything to build on the grounds? Okay. All right. This time I'll ask that we approve the consent agenda unless there's objection.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I hear second.
Second.
Say it with Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Burnett and Mr. Rogers vote in the negative. Okay. Motion still carries. I think that's the way I'm supposed to handle that. Okay. Next, board members, you have an opportunity to, you've had an opportunity to look at the agenda as amended. At this time, I entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Mr. Kirkpatrick made the motion, say it with Mr. Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have some special recognitions for Ms. Jenny Wood.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, it is my pleasure tonight to be able to recognize the Teacher of the Year and the Principal of the Year. We've already had our luncheon and recognized them both, but we wanted to formally recognize them to you and acknowledge their awards tonight. So from our Teacher of the Year is from Bethel Elementary School, Mandy Williamson. I mean, sorry, Mandy Allen. I was looking at Mandy Williamson, Mandy Allen. I was reading her teacher, regional Teacher of the Year portfolio. It's all about getting to know the kids and their families and growing them and building relationships with them. And she takes the Haywood County Schools instructional framework to a whole new level in her teaching. And she is just, she teaches her heart out every single day. So we're really excited, and she had her regional interview today. So hopefully, we'll find out in the next few days. But it is my pleasure to recognize Mandy Allen as the Teacher of the Year.
I just wanted to quickly just say thank you. I feel like this is one of the biggest honors of my lifetime. I'm a proud product of Haywood County Schools. I'm thankful my children attend Haywood County Schools and feel very blessed to get to go to work every single day. And this is such an honor because we truly work beside the best of the best that give their best every single day, no matter what challenges are thrown their way. Give it 110% to love these kids and do the best for this community. So it truly is an honor, and I really thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Congratulations, Ms. Allen.
Next, our Principal of the Year is from Pisgah, Mr. Clint Connor. And I don't know, for those of you who were at the Teacher of the Year luncheon, you got to hear his Because You're From Haywood speech, which was phenomenal. If you haven't heard it, you can go on YouTube, because I've already told him he's going to have to give it again, and I'm going to have to video him so we can use it for our beginning teachers. But if you're ever at Pisgah, he has the most open-door policy of anyone I know. And you will never go in that office when there's not people gathered around talking about their students and their instruction. And it's truly, he fosters a family atmosphere at Pisgah. So it is my pleasure to recognize Clint Connor as the Principal of the Year.
Mr. Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, and guests. I just want to say thank you for the support you've given me as a principal over the last nine years. It's a great spot to work in. As Ms. Allen said, there's no other spot like Pisgah High School. It's a great community. There's great parents, there's great students, and I have a great support cast that make my job easy every day. And it's a huge honor and privilege to receive this award, and I appreciate your support very much. Thank you. We'll continue to work very, very, very hard.
Thank you, Mr. Connor, and congratulations again. And if you haven't heard his speech, it's worth the time and effort to look it up. It was a great job. Thank you, Clint. Next, we have Dr. Nolte.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, and guests, it is my pleasure to publicly announce that the State Board of Education and the Department of Public Instruction recognized Haywood County Schools at their October State School Board Meeting as what they call their Spotlight School District. They put a very nice blog on their website. They were very complimentary of, yeah, give one second, I'm still talking. That's a joke. They were very complimentary of, thank you for laughing. Found my second career. They were very complimentary of all the things that we had gone through over the last couple of years. And despite all of those barriers, have been very successful, not only in supporting the community with food and other things, but in our academic performance. So I think Brooke has that presentation that Kim snipped out for us to play for you.
In response to Chairman Davis's request that we bring to the board each month stories on bright spots in North Carolina public schools, this month I bring you the story of resiliency and excellence in Haywood County Schools. On September 9th, Freeburne and I joined Regional Director Jeremy Gibbs to see the dedicated school leaders and teachers who have a heart for students and families and a pride for their community and their schools. This picture is a pre-flood from tropical depression threat. It, that tropical depression dropped over a foot of rain during the first week of school, causing unfathomable damage. You'll see, if you turn to the next slide, what that field actually looks like now. Here you can see the devastation. We spent time with Superintendent Bill Nolte, Assistant Superintendent Trevor Putnam, Assistant Superintendent Jill Barker, who drove us all around their district to bear witness to the devastation that the flood had had. They told us of the community's support to clean up and recover and the dedication that their teachers, their families, their community, and their students had to getting back into their schools and making sure that they recommitted themselves to five days of in-person instruction, which they had started in the spring. So you can see what all that looks like. In that bottom right-hand picture, that was a picture that was taken from the news. You can see that there's an actual ladder bucket truck that's lifting people over the floodwaters to make sure that they were reuniting families, students who were not able to get to their families, not able to get to their homes, and in many cases, their homes were completely lost. This is just an incredible, an incredible scene. Their principals and teachers and even one very brave middle school student told us their stories of wading through water, watching waves wash completely over buildings, searching for loved ones, and then pulling together to clean it all up and rebuild. And they shared their data on successful education and outcomes. On the day that we were there, they had just gotten their data back from their proficiency and growth from last year, and were able to show incredible gains that they attributed to teachers being in the classrooms, schools being open as much as was allowable, and getting the majority of their kids back. How their teachers and principals use data to make sure that their students have the best educational experience in every classroom was something that was at the heart of the visit that day. The data shows that their commitment to that five-day instruction face-to-face yields growth and proficiency. These teachers, their kids, this community, they are the heroes of their own stories, and they are the heroes of our state's story at this time. And we are very lucky that we have been invited to come back to Haywood County in a couple of weeks to see their yearly epic showdown between Pisgah High School and Tuscola High School for what is surely going to be an incredible Friday night lights football game, seeing the pride and resiliency come to light in this lighthouse community. Finally, an additional part of the Haywood County visit happened a week before that, where Mevin Rash from EDC invited me to join her at Haywood Early College, where they were named an Apple Distinguished School, one of 546 schools in 32 countries and only one of four in North Carolina. An Apple Distinguished School centers leadership, educational excellence, and innovation at a heart of everything that they do. And last year, their overall proficiency during the pandemic was 98.7 in the top 10 of the state, all led by Lori Fox, the 2021 North Carolina Principal of the Year for the National Association of Secondary School Principals and the North Carolina Western Region Principal of the Year. What Lori Fox said, and on the last slide, you can actually click on that link in your documents, and you'll be able to read about Lori and her leadership at her school. What Lori Fox said is that we are going to refocus, reset, recreate, and restart as many times as needed to get this right for each of our students, given whatever comes our way, pandemics, cyber attacks, or floods.
So, Mr. Chairman, that was a great honor for the district, and I really do believe that is a district-wide honor. We made lots of difficult decisions. We mean you, not me, to have school five days a week. We have had a lot come at us, and we decided not to crawl in a hole, but to try to do the next best thing that needed to be done. And I just give credit to that recognition, to our entire district, decisions from this board, all the way down through every employee on every day. So just wanted to share that with you, and thank you for your support. And congratulations, Haywood County Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Any questions? Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Stevenson and Chelsea Williams.
Chairman Francis, school board members, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, and Ms. Barker. Thank you, guys. For those that don't know me, my name is Chelsea Williams, and I'm the School Nutrition Supervisor and Dietitian for Haywood County Schools. And I'm also the co-chair for the School Health Advisory Council along with Ms. Stevenson. So today, after completing the tri-annual assessment on our Healthy Children Progress Report, we're here to give you an update on SHAC. So the School Wellness Policies is based off of the School Board Policy 6140. And the main three requirements of this policy are to have a committee consisting of parents, students, school food authority representatives, PE teachers, school health professionals, school board members, school administrators, and the general public. This committee consists of content for different nutrition programs within the school systems, nutrition education, physical activity, and other school-based activities promoting school wellness. And along with that, we need to have continuous monitoring, assessing, and evaluating. So the form that we like to look at is the whole school, whole community, and whole child program. So with this, we look to have the community involvement with our students to focus on all different aspects of their health, from, you can see the wide range of health education, physical activity, along with all the teachers and also the administrator within the school systems. With that being said, every three years, principals are surveyed and asked questions based upon our school wellness policy. And after completing it this past year, the three main focuses that we will focus on moving forward are increased awareness of the local wellness policy and its contents, encourage healthy eating and physical activity, and lastly, to provide adequate mental health services and professional development on mental health. So looking at the first one, so increased awareness of local wellness policy and its contents. After polling all of the principals in Haywood County Schools, as you can see here, about 60% are not aware of the local wellness policy, the staff members at each school. So over the next three years, we would like to see that increase along with also having the wellness policy posted on the school websites. As you can see here, only about a third of the schools in the county have that posted. And following that, only about a third have it posted in their student handbook. Next, healthy eating and physical activity. So right now, the school nutrition program, we participate in the school breakfast program, the national school lunch program, after-school snack program, the after-school supper program, and summer feeding. We've also, throughout the pandemic, have served close to 2 million meals to the community. All of our schools are designated as healthier U.S. foods. Each school has students participate in PE classes, recess. Elementary schools participate in Go Noodles, which are little classroom breaks to get the children up and moving. And in the past, we've participated in active Girls to School and Girls on the Run. Ms. Stevenson's going to focus more on the mental health aspects, but real quickly, I was just going to show you guys at the poll after asking all 15 principals. As far as mental health services, as you can see here, the majority of the schools do not feel that we have adequate mental health services provided to our students. And these are some of the main topics that they think that we should have more professional development provided to them. So as you can see, every principal responded that yes, they feel that there needs to be some sort of professional development provided. Just to touch base on those, it's the multiple emotional mental impairments, effective strategies for students with ADHD, et cetera, parent neglect, parent drug use, new services for DSS and social workers, trauma education and how mental health impacts schools, issues that research has shown are most rampant with age group of our students, and lastly, of course, suicide and bullying. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Stevenson, and she's going to touch base more on the mental health aspect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you'll think back to the school-based mental health policy that the State School Board wanted to put in all local school board policies, is that each school district develop a school-based mental health plan. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to let you know our updates with working on that school-based mental health plan. Some of the highlights are building or aligning our infrastructure. And we have been able to hire two licensed clinical social workers to complete our risk and suicide assessments with the hopes of hiring one or two more this year. So working to build that infrastructure and also providing counseling to students as a related service. Another highlight is adopting and implementing a mental health training. It's going to include six hours this year on youth mental health, suicide prevention, substance abuse, and teenage dating violence. If you'll remember, last year, we had to do the training on child sexual abuse prevention and sex trafficking, and that will occur every two years. Aligning with academic objectives, and that is, you know, we have lots of schools either looking at or adopting social, emotional learning curriculums this school year. And then the fourth is the Treatment, Referral, and Reentry Protocol. So we are collaborating with our community mental health providers, letting them come into the school and meet with kids if the team feels like that that's appropriate. So outside providers come in and meeting the needs. We've developed a resource map of local mental health resources in our community that guidance counselors and schools can use with parents. And also the development of a suicide and risk referral protocol. Sadly, we've had to complete some of those this school year, so following through with that and meeting with safety teams at the schools. Have any questions about any of that?
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Thank you, Chelsea Williams. Thank you very much. Next, we have Dr. Putnam.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as is required yearly, we are to provide you with the student drug testing report. You will remember in 2021, student drug testing was canceled due to COVID and health concerns. So the number of students tested is zero, and the amount of money spent on drug testing is zero.
That's a pretty simple report, I believe. Zero and zero. Are there any questions or comments about our zeros last year?
Not, not.
I was going to say, we have started that program for this current school year.
Sir, we have already begun. We've already had one round of student drug testing.
2021, or 21, 2020.
Yearly report this time next year on the findings of those.
All right, thank you. Next, you're still on the agenda.
All right, let me turn my next folder. Next is, I'm also required yearly to provide you with a compliance audit for concussion and head injuries. The Superintendent's Annual Report to the Board on Compliance with Laws and Policies Related to Student Wellness shall include a report on the system's compliance with laws and policies related to concussions and head injuries. What we have done thus far, thus far, all school athletic directors were reminded of the requirement of the concussion sheet that all athletes, parents, and guardians, school employees, volunteers, or first responders must complete pertaining to concussion before they are allowed to participate in interscholastic athletic activities found in Section B. And I've also encouraged ADs to have preseason parent meetings to take care of these items in a timely manner. Concussion education video for high school student athletes. We had a new option or avenue for students and parents in providing that information and having it reviewed. They actually gave us a QAR code that we could distribute. They could scan that code. It knew exactly which student or which parent was viewing it, made a record of them having viewed that video at home. That's a new option that the High School Athletic Association provided to us. Next is the School Head Injury Information Sheet. Each year, all coaches, school nurses, athletic directors, first responders, volunteers, student athletes, and parents of student athletes must be provided with a concussion and head injury information sheet that meets the requirements of the State Board before any student, school employee, volunteer, or first responder will be allowed to participate in interscholastic athletic activities, including tryouts, practices, or competitions. He or she must sign the Head Injury Information Sheet and return it to the coach. Parents must also sign the sheet and return it to the coach before their children may participate in interscholastic athletic activity. The principal of each school shall ensure that a complete and accurate record of the returned signed sheets is maintained in accordance with law and State Board policy. Also, within this policy, 4270/6145, athletic directors were reminded to have emergency action plans and a little bit about that. So for every one of our athletic venues, we have to have an emergency action plan. Where can the AEDs be found? How many first responders will be on site? How many trainers? What is the protocol? Should we have injury occur in the stands, on the field? At the concession stand, we have to have plans for all of that. And so those are submitted to me. Each principal or designee shall develop a venue-specific emergency action plan to respond to serious medical injuries and acute medical conditions. And those have been submitted. Now, each year, the state, don't ask me why they did it this way other than they expect it to be routine. it to be routine. It's tied with the financial audit. So we actually, or one of our schools gets audited for having their emergency action plan, and this year, Tuscalo, or this past year, Tuscalo High School was the one that was selected for the audit. They passed the audit. Just wanna say, our athletic directors are doing a great job keeping up with all the necessary paperwork pertaining to athletics, including but not limited to yearly school physicals, consent to treat, and concussion sheets. We are continually continuing to use family ID, so thank y'all for approving use of family ID that allows all of this information to be stored and entered by the athletic director or the athlete's parent or guardian. Once a student is entered, their information will follow them from middle school to high school. Another convenient feature is, once the information is loaded, parents will be able to log in and print copies of their child's physical. The program alerts the A.D. and parent or guardian when a physical will expire. So it's a, it's a very valuable tool. And that concludes my yearly concussion and head injury report. Might there be any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
Did that good a job.
Did great. Very good. Next is our open session time, and we have had some folks sign up to speak to the board. Now, it's a time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individuals, students, and personnel. First, we have signed up to talk to us tonight is Mr. Ted Carr.
Chairman Francis, thank you very much. I'm here to really address thirty or forty retired men and women that are out there that wanna help our students get an education, but not by teaching. I'm encouraging them to get checked out, get certified, to drive a school bus. Get the students to school. If you get them to school, they could be educated. I drive as a substitute driver. I drove this morning for Principal Connor team tomorrow, ten, ten times a month. If you volunteer about two hours a day, you can relieve an assistant principal or a coach that's driving instead of teaching the students. You gotta do it 'cause you love the kids, not because of the money. After you pay your taxes and tires and the gas to drive to school, you'll have about enough to buy breakfast at Hardee's from somebody that's earning more than you are flipping burgers. I'd like, on a second item, I'd like to encourage everybody out there listening to support Lieutenant Governor Mark Robinson in his effort to keep CRT out of schools. Joe Biden ran on a campaign of unity. If we unite, there will not be a critical race. We'll all be one race, one nation under God. Third item I just thought of is that I'm here to observe and verify, and if necessary, testify that everybody talking with my friend Deputy Mitchell Rathbone, that everyone is a concerned parent and not a domestic terrorist.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Next, Mary Beth Cochran.
Thanks for the chance for me to speak and be heard by y'all. My name is Mary Beth Cochran, and I am jointly raising my four grandkids in Bethel School District. It seems like the board and our government, whether it be state or federal levels, are picking and choosing randomly how rules are applied and enforced. These mask and vaccine mandates are unreal and unreliable due to false info being dished out. My seven-year-old grandson, who has ADHD and other medical issues, he hates his mask and has come home complaining of headaches several times. He has also been quarantined twice. He wasn't, he was negative, had no symptoms both those times. However, he had to stay home and miss school. This is not working. Something has got to be done. Why should these kids continue to suffer? They need normalcy and a proper education. They have basically missed out of, oh, about one and a half years of school, and they will never get that back. And even now with quarantines, my middle school child had three substitute teachers, one for English, one for gym, and the other for history. They were given handouts for those classes. So why, as parents, do we then need to buy all these school supplies that these kids then have to carry around in their book bags all day, every day, due to there being no lockers? I've said this before, these kids are our future. Well, right now where I'm standing, we're totally screwed because they've lost it. We need ones in our office that have been or lived in our shoes, someone whom has been on government programs, a person whom will fight for them, for the down-to-earth people. So I'm announcing, I'm running president 2024. I'm gonna make sure that these, that I'm going to fight for these kids all the way. We, as our parents, are the only ones who should decide whether our children wear masks or get vaccine decisions for our kids. We, as citizens, have rights, and they are being violated. In closing, please think long and hard on this one statement I'm about to say. Why? When we all go into restaurants, when we sit down at that table, we can take that mask off and sit there for two, three hours if we want to, but yet our kids are going to school every day, sitting at their desks, three, four hours straight. It's wrong. Common sense sometimes is the real answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran. Next, we have James Middleton. Did I say that right?
Yeah, you did.
Okay, thanks, James.
Most people say Milton.
Middleton.
I had mail come in that way. Besides you guys letting me talk, I'm aware of the money that's being funded into you guys. I understand you need money. I understand that. Everybody needs money. But when it is at the cost of possibly vaccinating kids, they can't make decisions for their own selves, which legally is, you can't do it. By taking money from the CDC, that's basically what you've done. You've told these kids they have, doesn't matter how old they are, they have no decision power. Their parents have no decision power. Okay? And I'm, I'm one of many, including in the Buncombe County, that has said, and I will state many, many times, and stick to it, because I was raised, stick to guns, no matter what. The day that they decide to tell you guys that my kids have to have shots, my kids will come out of school. I don't agree with it. The, you can sit here and preach science all day long. The science is flawed. I'm a friend, and it was a guy that's, I've been friends since I was seventeen. He's a registered genius. He has nothing to do all day long because he's retired, do research. So any research that he passes down to me, guaranteed is the absolute truth, because I'm not gonna sit here and preach something that I don't know nothing about. As far as the shots go, I've noticed places around here that have booster shot. CDC didn't even approve it. I sat at my work and watched it on TV where they didn't approve it. That's another one I don't wanna see in the school system. I have a, I have a six-year-old child that goes to Meadowbrook. Every single day, I have to fight with that boy to go to school because of the masks. He has ADHD, he does not understand. Thankfully, the staff there is good enough to at least try to accommodate and explain to him, instead of going, well, you're gonna wear whether you like it or not. This is one of the few counties I can say, well, actually, take the time, the teacher will take the time to explain this to kids that may not understand. Before you take that funding, think long and hard about the repercussions that's gonna come through, because when they start telling you, you gotta do things, that takes away from each and one of y'all's powers to say no. So just, just think about it before you do it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. On clarification purposes, Dr. Nolte, are there currently any strings attached to the COVID money that you're aware of? Like they have to be vaccinated or anything to your knowledge?
The ESER COVID money has to be related to education in the school system and the past, present, or future impact. There is no requirement that we wear a mask related to the ESER money, and there's no requirement that we require anyone to get a shot. I do know that there's some state action that's trying to do that, but we don't have any related to the COVID funding.
At this time?
At this time. Who knows?
It changes.
Y'all know what happens in this world. Things change pretty quickly, but we're not aware of any.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Stephanie Bell?
I wish I had more than three minutes because I need to address that.
And, don't start the clock yet, because I wanted to tell her happy birthday. I found out it was her birthday today.
I'm spending my birthday with y'all, because I love seeing you every month so much. I'm happy. Okay, let me know. You just wait for a minute on this. Just hold my hand. Okay. They say trust the science. The science says that we have had seven hundred and fourteen confirmed cases of children from the ages of zero to eighteen years old and zero deaths in Haywood County, zero. The life expectancy of people in the United States is seventy-three years old, and we have had eighty-seven of our hundred and thirty-three deaths over the age of seventy-five. Our children are not dying. What you just asked about in that forum, there's a huge book about it, them ESER funds that you guys are getting, which the ESER one was one point six million, ESER two, six point four, ESER three, fourteen million dollars. Now, under that comes stipulations with, is this huge book right here, which Mr. Nolte just said, one of my things, it comes with guidance and recommendations provided by lighting our way forward, and those were not mandated, which by the way, mandate does not mean law. It hasn't went through legislation, just like the vote, voter stuff didn't happen, just like this mandate on these shots are not even a real thing. So based on the North Carolina law, March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, y'all took remote learning away from us because of a law and said we had to go to school, we had to put our kids in masks, because you have to abide by universal correct wearing of masks, physical distancing, hand washing, respiratory, blah, ski, blah, ski, blah. Now, in the next part of this five thousand billion-page books like they do in bills in Congress, it says, "To the extent that the SEA and LEAs consult with the federal, state, and local health officials, the description should not include, if available, where we have received support for screening the testing from the state or local health department based on funding awarded by the CDC." So we weren't given money by the CDC, but the health department was, and they were given one point one two one million dollars to the payroll of the people of the health department to do this to our children. They were paid. It literally says their payroll. Guys, I'm giving you every bit of my information when I leave here for you to read it for yourself, because I'm tired of coming here. I'm over it. My kid's health decision is up to me, not to anybody else. What this mask is doing is absolutely ridiculous. It doesn't help anything. If you can smell a fart, you can, that virus can get right through your mask. They don't work. It's not affecting our kids. I just showed you the science, so trust it. Also wanna let you guys know, I'm gonna give you information from the CDC Foundation that lets you know exactly who funds them, and then they're gonna fund our health department that's putting our kids in these masks, which is absolutely absurd. And you know what we have to do? It's really easy. They told Rosa Parks, move to the back of the bus, and you know what she's, no. That's all we gotta say. I'm over it. I'm done. I'm done with my kids having to put on a mask to be able to have a constitutional right to be able to go to school. I'm done. Please, I need you guys to say you're done too. This is ridiculous. I wanna leave y'all with this information, because I want you to read it. Thank you so much for listening to me, and I'm sorry I wasn't raising my voice. I just have a lot of passion.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
I'm not a lawyer, but I feel like recently I've become one.
You've all become lawyers, doctors, nurses, through all this.
Next, we have on our agenda, Mr. Hines.
You've gone on me, honey. I'll let you know what happened. I'll stay this night. Love y'all.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, tonight, your consideration is the Employee Assistance Program provided by ESI. If you remember, last November, we contracted with ESI to provide an employee assistance program, and for those, I know y'all are well aware, but for the public that doesn't, may not know, an employee assistance program provides counseling services in multiple areas, things like work and life benefits, self-help resources such as financial counseling, peak performance coaching, which a lot of it is staff development-type training and leadership, and not necessarily in teaching, but in other areas of life, personal development, wellness benefits, how to help with how to deal with children or teenagers, or whatever type of problem you might have, or if you just want to know more about particular topics and have someone to talk to. This is a completely confidential service. We do not know which employees talk to them or call them. It is free for our employees with the fee that you agreed to pay. Last year, up to this point, when we started in last November, up to this point, our employees have engaged in seven hundred and four activities with the Employee Assistance Program, and it has served so far two hundred and fourteen of our employees, which is about twenty percent. The company that provides this service tells us that that is a really good start with the program as far as participation. We would ask that you continue this program for our employees. We think it's been an excellent benefit during this pandemic and has helped our teachers with all of the struggles we all have. So we would appreciate continuing this program, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this time, I would like to make a motion that we do continue to approve this program. I think it's been a very good thing, and like you say, twenty percent for the first year, that can only grow, and from what the results we've seen, I think it's helped a lot of our employees, and I think it's a great thing. We gotta take care of our own, take care of our teachers.
A motion from Mr. Rogers, I'll hear a second.
Second.
Mr. Burnett, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in the room say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr.
Mr. Hines. Ms. Shipman.
Good evening, Chairman Francis and members of the board. I come to you tonight with a pre-K contract that I would like to present to you for your approval. This is a two-year contract so that we can implement our NC pre-K program for another two years and receive funding for that program through Region A Partnership for Children. And I think you guys have the And I think you guys have the attachment of the contract, and, um, Pat Smathers has reviewed and approved this contract, and it is for a maximum, um, eligibility of four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, four hundred twenty-five, um, thousand seven hundred dollars per year.
Okay. Does any board member have any questions before we make a motion to approve? Need a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Dr. Rogers made a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hinson, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shipman, for bringing this forward to us. Next, we have Ms. Jill Barker.
Chairman Francis and members of the board, I bring to you, it was posted on your Moodle, the Parent Advisory Council. Those are parent members from each school that are recommend, recommended by administration, and just for your approval this year, they will serve on that council for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. If you had any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I make a motion we approve a twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two pa, uh, Parent Advisory Council as presented.
You have a motion from Mr. Patrick. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Next, we have Ms. Kim Jackson.
Good evening, Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker and guests. Last year, the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources reached out to all public school units in North Carolina to provide mobile hotspots and twelve months of service to help bridge connectivity gaps in our communities. For us, three hundred devices with twelve months of service totaled around eighty-five thousand dollars. Our service on those hotspots is now expired, but the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources has graciously offered to transfer the ownership of the devices to Haywood County Schools as an agency sale at zero cost. We've applied for emergency connectivity funding to provide an additional twelve months of service for these devices. Tonight, I ask for your approval to accept this donation. We're extremely grateful for their support during remote learning.
Any questions for Ms. Jackson? Looking for a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Clark's made a motion. Second, Mr. Hinson, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? I just like to say that's a gracious donation, be sure and send a note from the board here that we appreciate that and that our school system really does appreciate that donation. Any other comments or questions before we vote? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll send that to them.
Please do. Next, we have Mr. Putnam. Dr. Putnam, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would like to request a lottery application, uh, for payoff of the Pisgah High School addition. Um, we have, after this payment, we will have two remaining payments, uh, on this, uh, project, so it's nice to actually begin to see an end to, uh, the PHS addition.
That was a good addition as well.
Sir.
Many well spoken.
Very good.
I need a motion for approval.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers made the motion. Do I hear a second? Say, but Dr. Rogers, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and I think you're up next. Is well.
I will lead the, the actual signature.
All right. Thank you.
Next, um, you can see that we have a good number of policies for first read, um, and I, I will not read through each of those. Uh, they're posted for thirty days. For anyone to review and, and suggest revision, uh, but those policies, uh, will be placed up for first read. There be any questions?
Point out that that is about the end of the first set for the spring policies. Now, we'll just receive the fall policies.
Yes, this concludes the spring policies, uh, and it might be helpful for the general public to hear, uh, there's a policy committee that convenes to review these comprised of different types of folks from all walks of life, and these are vetted, and they do just a fantastic job going through, making sure, uh, that it is, policy is made in the best interest, uh, of our kiddos, um, and these recommendations come from the North Carolina School Board Association, and so, uh, some are legal requirements. Obviously, we put those up for first read, and we advise you to adopt those, and some are just recommendations.
Well, I'd like to make another comment about that as well. I think that the, the policy committee does an excellent job, and we localize our policies, it makes a big difference as well. I know that, uh, there's been policies that have been suggested that we've tweaked and more meet Haywood County needs versus what would be needed in Raleigh or Charlotte or Mecklenburg County, and I, I thank the committee for, uh, working so hard on these policies. With that being said, the first reading, uh, of those policies will be tabled until our next regular board meeting for approval. Okay?
Also for second read and for approval, uh, Mr. Chairman, Policy thirty-six-ten, which involves the counseling program, Policy fifty-two-ten, uh, which is the distribution and display of, of non-school material, sixty-one-forty, student wellness, a sixty-two-ten, organization of school nutrition services, sixty-two-twenty, operation of school nutrition services, sixty-two-thirty, school meal and competitive standards, sixty-three-oh-five, safety and student transportation services, sixty-three-fifteen, drivers, sixty-three-twenty-one, bus routes, sixty-four-fifty, purchase of services, seventy-one-hundred, recruitment and selection of personnel, seventy-one-thirty, licensure, seventy-four-thirty, substitute teachers, and ninety-twenty, facility design.
I make a motion we approve for second read the policies that was presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Francis, any question, discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Next, we have special issues. Mr. Kirkpatrick, you had the item that needed to be.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Special issues met earlier today, and, uh, we had a request from Canton Middle School of naming one of their facilities, the B Building, which was a big gym, but they've got to be one motion before we get into that motion, and that motion coming out of special issues would be to waive the three-year requirement in Policy ninety-three-hundred, naming facilities regarding the naming of a Canton Middle School Gymnasium. I put that in a form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Burnett, I didn't hear who it was from. Um, we have a motion and a second. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? What we're basically doing is we're taking a part of our policy, and we're gonna waive just that part of it for this, uh, vote. If you weren't at the special issues committee meeting, it's in our policy that we'd wait three years to do something such as this, but we've waived that if we approve this now. Any more clarification? There being no further discussion or comments, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I bring before the board in a form of a motion out of the special issues to approve naming the B Building Gymnasium for the Steve Letford Gymnasium at Canton Middle School.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Clark, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Well deserved.
Good choice. There being no further comments, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Nolte, will you please let Mr. Crook know that it has been approved tonight?
Will do that, sir.
Thank you very much.
Sir, right at the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Stephen, for the special issues committee meeting today. They don't meet very often, but when they do, it's important.
It's important.
It's important stuff. It really is. Thank you much. Next, we have Dr. Nolte.
Brooke, if you could pull up that retention bonus plan, um, among the ESER funds that are provided to school systems, school systems may pay a retention bonus. Can't necessarily pay backwards, um, for work that people have done unless they're willing to commit to continue to work for a period of time. And so, we were trying to wait until the state budget was passed before we did that because we've heard rumored that there may be something in the state budget also along those lines from state funds, not a federal ESER funds. Uh, we have been, uh, told from fairly reliable sources that the, uh, state budget, uh, may continue to be, to be debated into, well into November. So we just didn't feel like we could wait any longer to pay, uh, the retention bonus that we have been talking about for some time. So, uh, this is the retention plan. We emailed this to you, um, I guess last Wednesday, uh, sometime last week, and, uh, this is a description of the plan that we are seeking, um, for which we are seeking your approval. So, uh, under, uh, the plan components, number one, retention bonuses would only be eligible for current employees who commit to work through the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, because that's one of the federal requirements. It has to be to get people to continue to work and to retain them. Uh, the second thing there is that we would ask them to enter into a signed agreement to continue to work through the end of the year. The second piece is that the repent, the retention period would actually, uh, begin March twenty. We can go back if we get a commitment for them to continue to work, and it would go through June of twenty twenty-two. Uh, and then the bonuses would be paid, uh, as follows. Uh, the, um, retention, uh, the, the, uh, full-time employees, regardless of their position, would see, would receive a monthly amount, and I'm not sure I've posted the correct, oh, the amounts are down lower, sorry, in the policy. Had a lot go on lately, so I'm not, not remembering everything clearly, but full-time employees would be paid a monthly amount for working and making a commitment to work. They would receive that for ten months if they were a ten-month employee and they were here and continue to be here. They would receive that for twelve months if they were a twelve-month employee and continue to work here. We, uh, did not think we could get by with paying for last summer. As you remember, we used a lot, well over a million dollars of the ESER money to provide substantial summer learning, and people made between twenty and fifty dollars an hour, and that was paid out of federal money, and that went to, you know, bus drivers who got them there and, and teachers who were nationally board certified, cafeteria workers and so forth and so on. So it would be a monthly amount. Uh, full-time current employees would receive the same amount, so a, just as an example, a full-time twelve-month principal and the, uh, full-time twelve-month secretary would receive the same monthly amount, because we are not giving the bonus because it's a secretary or a bus driver or a cafeteria worker or a principal. We're giving the bonus because those people came to work very, very hard in our district with our doors open five days a week, and they came to work during COVID, and in most cases, they did more. So we would not differentiate between job title, um, as some of the, some other districts are doing. Uh, C, part-time employees would receive a prorated amount of, uh, one amount for, uh, folks who work twenty hours or more, but were not working enough to be considered full-time, and then another amount for people who were part-time, less than twenty hours. And then, we put in a provision for substitutes. We're paying about as much as we can pay with state funds right now for substitutes. They have been invaluable throughout the process, and so, what we want to do is to pay substitutes a daily additional amount for each day that they subbed last school year and this school year. Okay? So how will that be paid out? If we look at, uh, item four, if, if the plan is approved, can you scroll up just a little bit there, Brooke? Thank you. So the monthly rates for the retention bonus are, full-time employees, again, regardless of job description, would receive one hundred and twenty-six dollars per month for the months that they worked from March twenty to June twenty-two. Again, if they weren't working in March twenty, it would start, uh, when they came to work for us, and if they left us, then they were not retained, and they would not receive anything. Part-time employees would be eligible for sixty-three dollars per month if they, um, if they worked, um, um, if they worked more than twenty hours, and I don't see the rate in there for the, for the, uh...
Substitutes.
Okay, the substitutes are down below.
Yeah, but the...
So, thank you. Not sure I could see it if I had my glasses on. Sixty-three dollars per month based upon their ten or twelve-month contract, and then the substitutes would receive, um, an additional five dollars per day on the days that they worked. Uh, we would, we would literally go back and look at last school year, twenty-twenty-one, calculate the days and pay that in November, then at the end of the current year, we would look at the number of days and pay that at the end of this year. So there are the timeframes, not really paying ahead for anyone from March to November, for full-time and part-time employees. They could choose to receive that payment in November or in February, and then with a period of December, uh, through the end of the year, uh, that would be paid at the end of the year, and then substitutes for each year. And then, just a reminder on some additional criteria, um, retention bonuses for ten months will be paid, will not be paid for the summer work, because many of them had opportunities to work at quite a substantial, um, amount more than they had worked before. Employees would not be eligible for multiple bonuses. Let's say they were a full-time person and they also drove a bus, but they would get the higher of any that they were eligible for. And then, uh, retention bonuses would be contingent upon approval of this board and any, uh, regulations that might apply. We think we've double-checked all of those ahead of time. Any questions or comments? I think that's a very good thing, Dr. Nolte, and I appreciate you working on that very diligently. Again, that's our employees, and again, to thank you for their dedication to Haywood County Schools. Yeah, I, I, y'all know I tell stories too much, but I had a former teacher come up to me at a Deacons meeting and said that people in the school system have been great, and they've worked really hard, and that's why y'all have done so well during the pandemic, and I've said, that's the only reason that we made it, is a lot of people went above and beyond, and this is our opportunity to help, uh, everyone and to help them with the same amount regardless of their job description. At that, yes, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve this COVID retention bonus plan.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Hinson, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? Say, Mr. Henson, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte.
It's very deserving for our employees. We'll get a press release out later this evening or in the morning. I want to read it one more time. There was one number I did not see in there, and that was probably because I didn't have my glasses on. But I'll make sure it's in there. I know we sent it to you.
That's right.
This may be a different, uh, version or different draft.
Okay.
Um, okay. Very good. Thank you again, and thank you on behalf of all of our current employees who have committed to stay or will commit to stay through the end of the year.
Next, we have personnel.
Mr. Chairman, uh, board, um, staff and guests. This time I bring to you the personnel that we discussed previously in closed session. For your information, we have twenty-one separation from employment, two employee status changes, two student-teacher interns, and five leave of absence. For your approval, we have fourteen employments, thirty-four employee status changes, one leave of absence, ten substitutes, uh, thirty-two employee coaches, uh, um, twelve non-employee coaches and two volunteer services.
It's time we entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Henson's made a motion to approve personnel as presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Henson, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Secondly, by, secondly by Mr. Clark.
Clark.
Who's that second?
Henson and Henson.
You're giving him a credit.
Thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Clark, sorry about that. We have a second, Mr. Clark. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? Hey, at least you're paying attention.
Y'all are.
There being no further discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, I should have mentioned it earlier, that the retention bonus plan was very much a group effort. And I had a lot of help, um, talking to, uh, people in finance, Dr. Putnam, Mrs. Barker, Mr. Hines and, uh, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you much.
Thank you very much, board.
Um, Mr. Chairman, somewhere or another, we missed finance.
No, it was under the consent agenda.
Is that under that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was under the consent agenda.
Sorry.
What I would like to say about the consent agenda is it, uh, I don't know that I handled that properly as far as Robert's rules order go. But in the next meeting, we'll break it back out since we do have members that are concerned about one of the items that was on this. And I believe it's, uh, been pointed out to me that we're going to vote on this each month legally. So, Ms., uh, King, if you would, we'll just drop that part off of there, and we'll go back to the way we've been doing it. And we'll just use that, the, uh, mask mandate, uh, policy that we have to vote on each month, we'll just line item it out, okay? Thank you very much, and I'll clarify that next month. And thanks for bringing it up, Mr. Henson, so we can get that back to, uh, normal, quote unquote. There being nothing else come before the board, meeting adjourned.